Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is Wednesday, December the 5th. And let the record reflect that all city council members and city officials are present. And welcome to the city council meeting. And we will begin by standing for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we beseech thee to bestow thy blessings on this council and its members as we meet today. We continue to be grateful for our abundance of the spiritual and material gifts you have provided for us and ask thy infinite guidance in all our undertakings. We pray that our members will continue to grow in wisdom and understanding, thereby befitting our society. We also ask thy gift of abiding love infold all the people of the world, providing us all freedom from fear and want, and peace and tranquility. Rain on earth as in your heaven. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Good morning. The first item on the agenda is the 2018 Digital Cities Survey Award.
Where is our IT manager?
I don't see an IT manager. Should we?
Brad's around.
Paging Brad Schute.
He just fixed my computer.
He was here a second ago.
So we know we need to find Brad. Should we proceed to the next item?
Proceed to the next.
Let's -- oh, here he comes.
The digital.
The first item on the agenda is the.
Number one.
I forgot all about that in getting ready this morning. I am sorry. And I didn't bring the plaque with me. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But once again this year, the city of Punta Gorda was finished in the top 10 nationwide for cities under a population of 75,000 for their use of technology and digital tools in engagement with citizens and processes within the city. So I just wanted to bring that to the council to inform them that we continue to excel and we have a great team. We have great support within all the departments and look to continue it next year.
Excellent. Thank you. And I know that anything that we can do to increase the engagement of our community is really important to us.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's obvious he didn't have his technology on or it would have reminded him to be here.
I was busy getting everything else set up and going.
We can engage the citizens, but we can't engage that.
In Brad's defense, he did save my computer this morning because I couldn't get it to boot up right. So he was also busy helping us.
Other comments? Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll proceed to the next item then. The legislative update by our city lobbyist, Jerry Paul. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Matthews, council members, and welcome, new council member, Carrie. We've had a chance to go through this process multiple years in the past with the exception of our new council member. I've spoken with her briefly and I'll spend some more time going through some of the processes that normally take place throughout the legislative cycle in the context of our Punta Gorda interests. But other than that, I'm going to keep it fairly short today. I understand you have a packed agenda and so we'll forego some of the traditional step-by-step walkthrough of the legislature, the both chambers and the delegations. But I do want to make a few comments about those. Before that, a brief introduction for those who are new to this. My name is Jerry Paul. I run a firm called Capital Access that provides governmental affairs consulting in Tallahassee to a host of stakeholders around the state, but our favorite one, of course, is the city of Punta Gorda. It's where we're from. It's what we enjoy the most and we get the most pleasure out of serving, at least my home district where I -- in Charlotte County where I formerly served as a member of the Florida Legislature. This year's legislative agenda is largely going to track last year's, which is a combination of issues that are important to -- have been important to the city on a state level, policy issues such as preserving home rule, making sure that government on the state level stays within its bounds, and a whole host of other issues that we work with on the policy level statewide in conjunction with the Florida League of Cities, which is also a very helpful community and tool for us, quite frankly. Each of the members of the council have been involved in the Florida League of Cities over the years and I'm sure that Councilwoman Carrie will avail herself of those resources as well. And we'll look forward to meeting with each of you in conjunction with the league and hopefully this year we'll have the mayor and perhaps others come up to the session in Tallahassee once it gets going. So, brief summary, we have a 120-member House of Representatives, a 40-member Senate. Of those members, there are three who are on the Charlotte County delegation, meaning that a portion of their district touches this county, and of them, all of them will have an interest in helping with the legislative agenda for the city of Punta Gorda. The process, the schedule if you will, for an annual legislative cycle goes something like this. Now that the elections are over, we go into the legislative committee weeks, which means that for five separate week-long periods, the legislature meets prior to the 60-day legislative session, which occurs this spring, and they start having their committees kind of map out their early agenda items based on their own priorities and based upon the priorities that they hear from communities all across the state. Individual members who are in the delegation for a local area start that process by having a delegation meeting, which for Charlotte County is tomorrow at Punta Gorda Isle Civic Center on Shreve. And I'll be joining the mayor there, speaking with our delegation members about the priorities for the city of Punta Gorda. Our delegation members are as follows. We have longstanding member Representative Mike Grant, and as you all know, this is his second term serving in the Florida House of Representatives, so we have great continuity there and he's always been just a wonderful supporter of the city of Punta Gorda and all of our agenda items. We're also very pleased that we now have former representative, now Senator Ben Albritton, who will be on our legislative delegation, and he has a very warm spot in his heart for Punta Gorda. He loves the city of Punta Gorda and he, as some of you may remember, was instrumental in brokering the overall arrangement whereby we were able to procure funding both from the state and from the Southwest Florida Water Management District for the Punta Gorda Reverse Osmosis Project. And so he's no stranger to Punta Gorda. He's been one of our biggest champions in the legislature for multiple years and he's going to continue that service and friendship now in the Senate. And I should point out that he has in attendance, one of his legislative aides, Jay Williams, who is also -- hold, stand up real quick, Jay. Everybody needs to get to know Jay. She is Ben Albritton, Senator Albritton in Punta Gorda and Charlotte County now, and we're very fortunate that she's bringing all of her longstanding legislative experience to bear in this new term for the senator. And then finally, Senator Joe Gruders, who was a former member of the House, whose district in the past was largely, well, was all in Sarasota County, but his Senate district extends further south now, that he's moved from the House to the Senate, and he's in that delegation as well. He's also no stranger to the city of Punta Gorda, and so we have a strong delegation going forward. As to the -- back to the timeline for the legislative process, there'll be the first of the committee weeks that I mentioned is next week, December, the week of December 10th. And then after the holidays, there'll be two of those committee weeks in January and three of those committee weeks in February. And then the 60-day legislative session, the official session, begins on March 5th and ends on May 3rd. And we'll work closely with the mayor and with Howard to schedule a time when the mayor can join us up there. And typically, when the mayor comes up, we make the rounds with not just members of our delegation, but key members of leadership and key members of those committees whose jurisdiction includes other issues of interest to us. So let me turn quickly to our legislative priorities. These have been prepared in writing and submitted to the delegation already pursuant to a previous agenda item whereby the council members spoke about this in great detail. Our legislative agenda is similar to last year as to issues specific to the city, and the primary one is to procure an appropriation to help funding with the Boca Grande Drainage District project. Last year was not a good year for the budget. It was not a good year for water projects. The budget was somewhat strained initially by a huge hole that had to be filled for funding for Hurricane Irma recovery. And first of all, revenues were slightly down, meaning there was very little surplus. Then Irma came along and gobbled up most of that surplus. And then, as some of you may remember, and most of you remember, the Parkland shooting issue arose and the aftermath of that resulted in policy and appropriations issues related to elevated school safety initiatives, which was a very large chunk of the state reserves for that year. So last year was a pretty tough budget cycle. We did not receive funding for that water project. Most water projects didn't get funded last year. So we'll be coming back in this year and seeking some funds for that. And we work closely with Howard and his great staff and the utilities on putting together the appropriate materials to put that project in the light most favorable to gaining support. And I'll follow up with you as well, Howard, while I'm thinking about the status of the 319H grant on that. I needed an update on that. Also, we are working through, continue to work through issues regarding funding and just the proper management and processing of the RO funding, funding through SWIFTMUD, the cooperative funding for the RO project. We'll continue to work closely on that. And also, we are working strategies to try to bring some resolution to the request for I-75 signage for the Vietnam Wall. The current rules as they're written are not favorable to what we're trying to do there. I believe the spirit is, but the letter of the law is not, and so we're trying to find a way to work around that that's acceptable to both to us, also the state DOT, but also federal DOT rules which come into play here. With that, as I said, I'll keep it very brief and welcome to any questions.
Any questions for Jerry this morning?
I just think the representation that Jerry's given us has been a bargain.
It has been excellent.
And I thank you for that.
Thank you. You know, some people make, could question why we would choose to do something like this. It's been invaluable to us as a community. Ever since you came on board, it's helped us achieve our goals and helped us get where we need to go. And some of the things that you've done for us may not be visible to everybody, but your working on our behalf has really paved the way through navigating a lot of waters, getting a lot of people on board, that we couldn't possibly do if we just, from our vantage point here in Punta Gorda. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. We appreciate your confidence and it's a pleasure to serve.
Yes. Look forward to working with you.
We'll see you in the morning.
All right. See you tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Now it's the time for the introduction of board and committee member nominees. So if anyone is here and would like to introduce themselves, if you are nominated for a board or committee position. Okay. Seeing no one getting -- oh, we have one. Okay. Please come to the podium.
Hello. My name's Nicholas Warden with Centennial Bank, and I have applied for the position on the Housing Authority.
Excellent.
Anything else that you guys need to know?
Anything you would like to tell us about yourself?
I have about 15 years in financial realm within the Charlotte County market. I started out as lending and worked my way into banking and now I'm a commercial lender within the local market. So I feel that the Housing Authority has had a great lead and has had great presence from our current members that were on it. Ron Monk, who is retiring from that board, is, I'm one of his predecessors at the current financial institution, and I feel that I would be able to step in and kind of not fill his shoes because his shoes were a little big to fill, but I'd be able to start in a good spot. All right?
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello.
Good morning.
Hi. My name is Jacqueline Benjamin, and I'm also applying for the Punta Gorda Housing Authority Board. I moved here in the '70s, attended Punta Gorda Junior High, on to Charlotte High School. I've been in the banking world for all my life, so it's over 40 years. And when asked if I was interested in this position, I thought, I haven't done this kind, but I read it over and I thought, this is something that I would really like to do for the community. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Anyone else wishing to introduce themselves? Okay. With that said, we will adjourn and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jerry. Good, how are you? Great.
Let the record reflect that all Community Redevelopment Agency commissioners and officials are present for the December 5th meeting. And the first item on the agenda are citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only, which includes the CRA Project Status Report, the approval of minutes from our November 7th meeting, and the invoices from Icard Merrill Attorneys. There's lots of names, so. Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, then we'll proceed. Howard, as the executive director, will listen to your report.
Howard Tunick, Director of CRA. This is our monthly report. For those of you who haven't been here before or seen it, this is for the community redevelopment area, the area from Fisherman's Village all the way to the hospital. Doesn't seem to be. Okay. Oh, this one. Here we go. Monthly Marina, the Municipal Marina Monthly Report. Again, the marina is pretty well-packed and we even, we're up to six moorings out there in the mooring field. Community room remains active. And live aboard, we have 20. Pump-out vessel, we usually compare ourselves to the previous month and the previous year. So there, you can see the increase in gallons pumped. Again, last year we were coming off of Hurricane Irma, so it's kind of tough to compare yourselves to last year. Herald Court Center, the reason it's on there is if many of you maybe have not seen yet, the increased signage up on top where we have our new branding logo and the name Herald Court Center. We also have the Ps, those letter Ps, circle Ps, so that signify that it's public parking. This is somewhat new since the packet. We just heard today that the contractor registration for the new Dream Salon at the Herald Court Center has been finally completed. And the tenant.
I'm coming.
Well, we kind of put a fire under their belt because they were getting ready to lose a hefty deposit if they weren't making some progress, so. So they submitted a plans revision for review and our staff will be working with, walking through the unit in two days to view the existing conditions and get them started.
Good, good, good. Excellent.
We plan to bid out. It's still on schedule. We're working on some bid packages and the construction engineering inspection services for Phase Two of Gilchrist Park. Again, we're not going to start that work until after the season, somewhere around April, if the bids come back favorably. The Area 1 restroom by the pavilions, the bids came back. We've reviewed them and we hope to have that on a council agenda, maybe the first next meeting in December. Hopefully, we'll see if they all check out, and we'll start that work soon. That's for the new restrooms by the pavilions that were built as far as Area 1. It's not going to close the park, they're just going to have a designated area for construction. And the playground restrooms are very, very close to completion. We're dealing with one issue regarding the flushing of the toilets, so once we get over that issue.
Just a minor problem. Minor detail.
I think I said that right.
Yeah, yeah.
Toilets flush. So we're dealing with that and otherwise, it looks great and it'll be.
As long as we don't flush.
As long as they flush, yes.
And I think it's important, also, the lower right shows the area where the mural is going to go, to emphasize that the mural faces the Harbor Walk intentionally because that's what the friends of the children's play area wanted. They're the ones who raised the funds for it and this is the way they wanted it.
Yeah. So that'll start as soon as we get this thing opened. And the library is progressing very nicely. No issues with the library, as far as we can tell. So they're on their way. And that's the monthly report.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions for Howard? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
Make motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of November 7th, 2018.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And then we have an invoice from our attorney, David Levin's firm.
Move approval.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the invoice from our David Levin's firm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. And now we have citizens' comments, and this would be on any CRA item. So if there's any citizens' comments on any CRA item, you're welcome to come to the podium and you have three minutes. Okay. I don't see a rush to the podium, so we'll proceed with commissioner comments. And Jahad?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Just, I'm very glad that the renovations at Gilchrist Park will keep the park open for the people who use it on a regular basis, so I'm glad to see that modification made. And thank you, Howard, for doing that.
For the restroom, you mean?
Sorry?
For the restroom.
Yes, for the new restroom. Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, I should have been more, yes. Yeah, I think it's important that we keep the park open as much as we can because it's obviously getting a lot of use. Yes, absolutely. And it's designed, I think, for the Area 2 improvements to try to do the same thing. Yes.
And I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Charlie?
Just a comment about the parking signage at the garage. I knew that it was coming, but really impressed with how the new parking designation signs stand out. It really was the right thing to do.
It was, and I think it's important for us to emphasize, the reason why we needed to do this is because the wayfinding signage that we all discussed talked about Herald Court Center, and there were no signs on Herald Court to say, this is what this building is. And so we're telling people to go to this building without even knowing what it is. So it's part of the overall plan, so.
And I also would like to add a ditto to Jane's comments about the upcoming holidays.
Excellent. Thanks.
I hope everybody enjoys my holiday Hanukkah. It's ongoing right now. I wish you all very happy holidays and upcoming Christmas, and we had a great Christmas celebration downtown. It was awesome, although somebody's ears are missing that's in the audience, but that's okay. But anyway, I would just wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you.
I have nothing else to say.
Welcome, Debbie.
Thanks.
Do you have a second now?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to also say Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
And we will reconvene as the Punta Gorda City Council.
I know when you're last, everybody already says it by the time it gets to you.
Well, and then the next time, she's just going to start with you and become first. That's the problem with that scene. Half the time you're first, half the time.
I know.
So I guess I have to hit the gavel again?
Yep.
Okay. Punta Gorda City Council meeting is now reconvened, and we will begin with our next item. It is a public hearing. Who is going to introduce the public hearing?
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. "A Resolution of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Electing to Use the Uniform Method of Collecting Non-Advalorem Special Assessments Levied Within the Inincorporated Area of the City to Fund the Design and Construction of an Additional Canal Improvement to be Known as Buckley's Pass, Stating a Need for Such Levy, Providing for the Mailing of This Resolution, and Providing an Effective Date."
Good morning. For the record, Mikael Finkel, paralegal and assistant to the city manager. The resolution of intent today to use the uniform collection method is an administrative in nature. It's required by state law. When a local government levies a non-advalorem assessment for the first time, they're required to adopt a resolution which basically puts the property appraiser, tax collector, and Florida Department of Revenue on notice that the city intends to place the non-advalorem assessment on the upcoming tax bill. So the purpose of the resolution today is to do just that, to place or to put on notice the county property appraiser, the tax collector, and the Department of Revenue that the city intends to have the assessment for the Buckley's Pass additional harbor access on the upcoming tax bill. The proposed resolution pursuant to statute states the need for the levy. It also identifies the boundary of the real property to be assessed, and it has been advertised pursuant to the state statute. This resolution is not intended to set the assessment rate, to determine the overall project cost, to define the water access units or the apportionment to the individual properties. Those decisions will be made in what's called an initial assessment resolution, and that's your February 6th hearing, when council will make those decisions. And then after that resolution, if it's adopted, those affected would be direct mailed notices of how the water access units or the assessment is apportioned to their properties. They'll have a comment period, and city council will hold a public hearing in April to determine the final assessment for the upcoming year. So that's just, I know there've been a lot of questions and where is this information? But today is just the resolution of intent to use the uniform collection method.
Okay. Howard, do you have anything to add?
So, again, this is an intent to assess. We've done this with previous assessments as recently as the Burnsthor Isles Electric Undergrounding Study. Same process. On this particular project, we've come a long way since 2015. March of 2015, you probably had over 400 people in the Isles Yacht Club when a group of folks from the Boaters Alliance and came, hired a consulting engineer, Hans Wilson, to do a study of the Buckley's Pass project. It wasn't called Buckley's Pass at that time. And at that meeting, the group proposed an assessment. That was the first time that a group came up in front of a public body and actually proposed to assess themselves for this project. So over the last three years, we've been working step by step. We've had, council has had numerous public meetings on this. We've hired an economist. We've had a legal attorney hired who specializes in assessments to come up with assessment methodology. So it's every step of the way, it's been handled within the way you have to do assessments and it's been publicly noticed. So that's why we're here today, to do an intent to assess. And we will then have, as Mikael Finkel explained, we will have. And we will then have, as Mikael Finkel explained, we will have our actual hearings come February and April. So, that's where we are.
Okay.
So, and I'll just add one additional thing.
Please do.
So, with respect to this project, the city council had three options. Either not to fund the project at all, to fund the project through what they call ad valorem tax, which is essentially taxes on your property, or to do it by means of a non-tax special assessment, which is, and the selection of the city council, which will be formalized by the adoption of this resolution, is to recognize their option was to fund it by means of a non-tax special assessment. That's all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions for the council members, to Howard, or Mikael, or David? Then what we will do is, we will begin the public hearing, and this is a public hearing, you will have three minutes to speak on this topic. And what we would like for you to do is come to the podium, and you can line up behind, right here, behind, you can see that our fire marshal has her hand up, so you can line up there. You will have three minutes, you'll see the lights will light up and the buzzer will go after you've exceeded the three minutes. What we would ask is if you, your comments are similar to someone else's, you can reference them, just to expedite the process, but we welcome all today, so.
So, let me follow up on my previous little comment. As you heard, the time to question the manner in which the assessment is going to be assessed will be at the public hearing in February. The relevant opinions that you might give today are whether or not this ordinance, this resolution should be adopted. In other words, if you feel like the project shouldn't be funded, that's relevant for the council's consideration today. If you feel like it shouldn't be funded by means of a non-tax special assessment, that also is relevant for the city council to hear today. Or if you support the fact that the city council's elected to fund it by means of a non-tax special assessment. Because that's what the city council is required to do in determining whether or not to pass this resolution today. Not fund it, fund it by means of taxes, or fund it by means of a non-tax special assessment. That's what's on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Carolyn Freeland, a resident and former mayor of this great city of Pontagorda. In preparation for this morning, I pulled out my file on Alligator Creek. This project has been discussed since my husband, Tom, and I first arrived here over 20 years ago. Finally, in 2015, as Howard referred to, the project got momentum with the admirable work of the Boaters Alliance. City council, as he mentioned, and staff received hundreds of letters, emails, and personal communications regarding the cut, and in April 2015, as mayor, I chaired an open workshop where residents had the opportunity to weigh in on the project. By our count, there were approximately 850 people at the meeting. Then, on May 6th, 2015, city council took the leadership, agreeing to move the project forward, recognizing that there might be bumps in the road because of the regulatory approvals required. The vote was unanimous because it was and still is the right thing to do for all of Pontagorda, not just the Bird Section. It has taken three years, as Howard mentioned, but we have arrived. I was thrilled to learn from the weekly report that work on Buckley's Cut is now on schedule to begin. Then amazingly, I heard there seemed to be some backpedaling from members of this council. The key to our city's vision and mission is sustainability, the ability of our community to consistently thrive over time as we make decisions to improve our city today without sacrificing its future. Building better and stronger communities is a core responsibility of our local government leaders. You, as our sitting council, must take the responsibility to lead Pontagorda today for its future. I was very pleased to hear that council has approved or is considering approval of a grant to help support the cut through. I would urge our council to, again, request staff to find additional funding so that no assessment is needed for our residents. I know that's a big charge, but I really urge you to take a look at other funding options. And please do not delay, begin the work on Buckley's Cut as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Matt Ezra. I live at 5024 Captiva Court, which is a cul-de-sac lot about 100 feet from the Rim Canal, if you're familiar with the area. And one street in from the La Costa Island Drive. La Costa Island Drive intersecting with the Rim Canal is the end of the proposed benefit area. I'm a long-term resident and boater in these waters, both sail and power, at this location since 1998. We are 18 to 20 minutes, depending on wind and tidal conditions, from the outer markers of Ponstaleon inlet. In order for an assessment to be judge illegal, it must provide a special benefit to the property and result in a fair and reasonable apportionment. You'll see these words popping up in the rest of my remarks. In other words, is the methodology logical and factually driven, and does it make sense? In this case, the special benefit is based on three assumptions. Improved navigational access, water quality improvements, and improved property values. I am addressing these three points listed, and why in my case, the benefit to my property does not meet the standard of an order for an assessment to be judge legal, it must be a special benefit to the property and be a fair and reasonable apportionment. First point is improved national, navigational access. In my case, I already have close navigational to the harbor. Certainly, other parcels in the Bird Section that are 10, 20, or 30 minutes or more from my property to the harbor receive a greater benefit than the proposed miniscule, if any improvement, I believe. That fails to prove that point. Water quality improvement. My property already enjoys a full tidal flow and water exchange. A simple site visit will confirm this. Please use the tidal rule of twelfth as a guide when making these observations to exceed that full tidal flow. Failed on that point. Improved property values. Well, not so much for me again. Being on the customer of the proposed benefit area, there would be little to no improvement in time or distance to the harbor for me, and consequently, no improvement to my property value. In fact, when it comes time to sell, it will not only create more competition for me with light properties that are now closer to the harbor. If you grant me another minute here.
Hi. Could you?
I'll wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you.
For these and other reasons, I request to be removed from the proposed benefit area. We do not receive a special benefit. Expanding the benefit area beyond the Bird Section is a clear overreach designed to increase the number of assessable parcels in order to lower the assess. One of the additional access is a reality, the city and council will benefit from windfall in property values and revenue. Why not fund this as a normal project?
Thank you. I've been advised, thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
And there is support for this in the Neighbors in Giblin report under a Supreme Court decision.
Thank you. I've been advised by our attorney that this particular topic will come up in February when we have our public hearings, so that's, we're not really discussing that particular item today.
Right, again, the methodology is not appropriate for consideration by the city council today. We understand that there are opinions pro and con with respect to the choice of the way that the methodology was selected, and you'll have ample opportunity in the February public hearing to air that out. And those people, for example, that are here to talk about whether or not it should be funded, like former mayor did, by means of special assessment, their opinions might be overshadowed today by a discussion that's focused on the methodology of the special assessment itself. So, to make the decision clear for the city council, please wait until February if you have objections to the way the assessment has been proposed, and confine your comments to whether or not it should be by special assessment, by a tax, or maybe by some other method, source. And that's what the city council needs to hear, as to whether or not to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello?
Good morning. My name is Judy Grosvenor. I live on Seagull Court, obviously in the Bird Section. Been there five years. I'm excited about the Buckley Pass coming through, and I want to thank the council for all the work they've done on this project over the last several years. And I am in favor of a non-tax ad valorem special assessment for the project, for any funding needed beyond grant money or other sources that the city may be able to pull in for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy Young. I live on Raven Court in the Bird Section. I'm here to welcome our new city council, and thank you for the opportunity to look anew at this issue. I believe that you have the opportunity today to correct some errors that have been made by past city council on this issue. I think the city and the residents are in favor of the pass, I think the city and the residents are in favor of the ad valorem, non-ad valorem method. I believe that the city council should honor and respect the integrity of the entire Pontagorda Isles Canal District and put this assessment in the same method that we use for all of, funding all the other aspects of the Pontagorda Isles Canal District. In other words, spread that ad valorem assessment across all. You would, actually, you may not even need to have a special resolution if you did that because you'd be using the exact same method that we use for all the others. But it would, it would be fairer than the politically charged term special benefit area, which suggests to everyone else in Pontagorda Isles that they're not going to benefit from this at all. And we know that that's not true. Gary Wine has said before, this benefits all, all of Pontagorda Isles. Carolyn Freeman just said exactly the same thing. So, I asked the council to look at this again and seriously consider having this assessment be across the entire canal district. I also want to express my opposition to the new methodology called water assessment units. I believe that that's a precedent that we don't want to do. It means that you, the city council will have set a precedent that it can carve out certain aspects of Pontagorda Isles Canal District and assess them in a different way than the rest of the canal district, and I believe that that's a path you don't want to take. I appreciate you listening to me today, and welcome again to the new council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is John. I live on Omar, and so I'm near where the new cut will be proposed.
Excuse me. Can you state your full name?
John Lynch.
Thank you.
Anyways, I don't think we should be paying a special assessment for that, just like I use an example of when they put in the paths in Pontagorda, which are beautiful and are beneficial to the residents that live along those paths. I'm sure their appraisals have gone up, their taxes are probably going up because they have a better property now because of the path. We shouldn't pay for it individually, it should be as a city. It improves everybody. Anybody wants to come on the water now, they can use it. I don't, I don't have a boat now, and I'm not using that, so it's not going to be a benefit to me. I don't see that I should be paying for it. It should be general, for everybody should pay in the city. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Are there any other comments? Please come up here to the podium, we need to, please line up behind this person. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jane Leach, and I live on Raven Court. I had, I had prepared something today, but listening to past mayor Freeland, I totally agree with her. I also agree with my neighbor Wendy Young. However, I just have a question. There seems to be some confusion on the definition of a water access unit. I'm not sure whether that's considered my whole property or of the number of feet that I have on waterfront. So, I would like the council perhaps to clarify that for us going down the line, because there's been, in the paper today, it was, they had, if you live in that area, when will I have to begin paying? And it says that the ad valorem tax, well, the uniform method of resolution of documents. But anyway, I just need a definition of the water access unit, whether it involves my whole property or the number of feet that I own on the water. So, if a council could consider making that public, I think that would clarify a lot of things in everyone's mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will make sure that everyone understands clearly. Thank you. And we know that when it's published in the paper, it's not always in a clear manner, so.
Diane Van Beek, 1447 Raven Court. I am opposed to the use of a non-ad valorem assessment being levied on a limited number of properties within Pontagorda Isles as stated in the resolution. I am not opposed to the design and construction of Buckley's Pass, but I am opposed to burdening the funding of the pass on a limited number of beneficiaries within the canal system. Traditionally, the Pontagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District has shared the cost of seawall repair and dredging. Every property in the district has paid a set fee under the assumption that every property benefits from a well-maintained canal system. Naturally, some properties benefit more than others, such as when catastrophe strikes. Some properties benefit more than others, depending on how much they use the canal system. But in the end, all properties have benefited by sharing costs for the overall good of the canal system. Buckley's Pass is not designed for the exclusive use of a limited number of tax-paying boaters. It is designed for access to the canals from a significantly different location than current entrances. It will serve as an alternative safe harbor entrance in bad weather conditions. It will provide an alternative entrance or exit should another entrance become blocked. It will, in fact, benefit all users of the canal system. A commonly argued premise is that the properties in the designated benefit area will see increased property values, thereby justifying their responsibility to bear the cost of a new canal entrance. This speculation is ill-conceived. If, in fact, these properties do increase in value, their ad valorem taxes will also increase, thus penalizing them twice. Once, for bearing the cost of the canal improvement, and second, by increasing their ad valorem taxes. The benefit area is, in fact, the penalized area. We already have a healthy, non-ad valorem assessment district in place. It is the Pontagorda Isles Maintenance Assessment District. It has served to foster a community spirit that makes our city unique in many ways. Setting one area of the district at odds to the rest will erode that longstanding tradition. It also sets in motion a precedent for future non-ad valorem assessments to further destroy the integrity of our cities, one of our cities' most valuable resources. Thank you.
Thank you. With seven seconds left.
Good morning. Karen Turnbull, Tohe Court, Bird Section, since 1991. I am in complete agreement with everything said by the previous speaker. I had a question for the attorney. When the person spoke about the resolution, she did mention that boundaries, the boundaries of the area were included in the, in the resolution today. Is that correct?
Good morning. Karen Turnbull, Tohee Court, Bird Section, since 1991. I am in complete agreement with everything said by the previous speaker. I had a question for the attorney. When the person spoke about the resolution, she did mention that boundaries, the boundaries of the area were included in the, in the resolution today. Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we are talking about assessing a certain chunk of PGI, not the entire area. So, those comments related to that is relevant today. Is that correct? Okay, all right. The city council, I've been to numerous meetings on this topic here. The city council approved this major $2.5 million-plus project on the basis of its benefit to the entire community. That's been repeated numerous times. This was not approved by this council as a special favor to certain boaters or people in the Bird Section. It was approved on the basis of a substantial benefit to the entire community, in fact, the entire city, in terms of attracting people, in terms of new residents, in terms of supporting businesses. Therefore, it should, the cost should be borne by the entire PGI community. There's no way that the benefit to any individual property can be quantified. There's no way it can be quantified in terms of property value. There's no way it can be quantified in terms of ease of exit, in terms of whether you're going to use your boat or not, in terms of how long it's going to take you, in terms of which exit you're going to use. There's no way those benefits can be quantified. So, for the city to say that a certain percentage of the population gets 0% benefit and therefore pays $0 of the cost, and yet a small group gets 100% of all the benefits and therefore should pay the entire cost, is just simply not appropriate. It's not reasonable. So, I strongly advocate, again, for the council to correct the error, as stated before, of trying to pull out a chunk of the Pontagorda Isles community and say that they are the only ones that will benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mary Ann Artisani of Raven Court. Here we go again. Everyone has so eloquently said exactly what I was going to say this morning, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I'm, I'm just going to say something right off the cuff. Abraham Lincoln said that a house divided against itself can't stand alone. The Isles has always been one unit. We've never, ever looked at each other as differently. To separate us by putting one, as everyone has said, one specific area, that, you just can't do that. When you do that, you create division. And I don't think this council would ever want to intentionally create a division or a rift amongst the members of the community. We are all for the Buckley Pass. Whether you have a boat, you don't have a boat. Whether you just want to enjoy the water, fish off your dock, it creates an environment that makes the Isles what we are, the Isles, Pontagorda, just like our parks and our bike paths and our trails. A lot of us can't use every amenity that our great city offers, but we don't begrudge the city from doing it. We encourage the city to do it, because it brings such greatness to our city and makes Pontagorda and Pontagorda Isles the wonderful and outstanding boating community, living community, residential, commercial, that we could ever have. All these amenities. To divide us, to begin that kind of a thing, becomes a very slippery slope, because future projects now will create the same animosity as we go forward, with questioning all the time. How does it benefit me as opposed to my neighbor? We've never done that. I am all for the pass. I don't think there's anybody who's not for the pass. It'll expand people's opportunities to go on a Sunday ride, a Saturday ride, well, every day around here is Saturday, go around the canals and look at decorations and people's yads and get ideas on how they're going to decorate their yads. It's like we always have done. We do this. We have this all the time. So, we're just embellishing our community with the Buckley Pass, whether you're boating or you're just living there. So, I ask the committee to please give some serious thought, listen to the people who so eloquently spoke before me, and please, for whatever sake, let's keep Pontagorda. Let's keep the Isles the way it is. Thank you. Happy holidays.
This is a public hearing. Are there any more people who wish to speak at the public hearing? This is a public hearing. Are there any more people who wish to speak? Last call for the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The hearing is closed. Council members, it's open for discussion. Carrie?
Of the three items that we have to consider...